The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We've got the mic on over there. Can everybody hear me? All right, with that, I'll welcome you this evening and call this meeting to order, this regular business meeting of the Stevenville City Council here on Tuesday, November the fourth, Election Day, 2014, at five thirty P. M. And just like to welcome everybody tonight on this wonderful rainy evening. And reports of an inch and a half or better around town today, so that is great news. The first item on the agenda tonight is Citizens General Discussion, so at this time I'll open the floor to anyone that would like to come forward and speak before the council. Not everybody wants. Okay, then we'll move next to the delinquent tax collection report. And this evening we've got Mr. Jeff Brown here to give us a presentation on that. So, and Jennifer Carey also, who's busy with the elections today. The polls are still open, so she was gracious enough to come over here in the middle of all that to be with us tonight, so thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. In your package, y'all should have gotten a little report, written report that, I believe I sent it to Walter last week. I'm just gonna run through that report a little bit. This report covers a period from September first of 2013 through August thirty first of this year. As y'all know, on behalf of the council, my law firm has retained to attempt to collect all the delinquent property taxes that are out there. The good news for the city council here in Stevenville is, is that, bad news for Lime Baragaga and Blair Sampson, good news for Cindy Stevenville is that the current tax collection rate is more than ninety-eight and a half percent. That is a great thing. That means that your citizens are out paying, the vast majority of your citizens are paying their taxes on time, getting them in, and you're not having to have me, to wait for a year for me to be able to get to them and get the process going. In regard to the process, we continue our mailing program. This past year, we mailed a little over four hundred and fifty letters on behalf of the city to those persons who owe the city money for delinquent taxes. When the letters did not succeed in bringing in voluntary payments, we did have to file forty lawsuits. Those forty lawsuits involved fifty-one parcels of property, and we saw a little bit, a little bit less than fifty thousand dollars for the city for those forty lawsuits. When persons who were served with citation of those lawsuits came forward and paid those lawsuits, paid those taxes and those costs, we were dismissed twenty-one lawsuits, which is a good thing for all concerned. It means the district clerk got paid, sheriff got paid for doing the citations, all the taxes got paid, so everything got paid in full. When, that was about twenty thousand dollars of the taxes to the, to the city. Under the judgment section, we went to the court and we took eleven judgments. I always take, take an opportunity to say that, one of the things I, by the way, I've been coming to Eretz County doing this kind of work for twenty-eight years now, and one thing that's been constant the whole time is that the county, the district court, the sheriff's department, the county clerk, district clerk, have always made themselves available to me to do the work on your behalf. And so, when you see those folks around town, if you think about it, tell them I mentioned them and that they're, that you're doing a good job, because they are, they're helping us. They make it easier on me to help collect money for you. And Judge Cashin has picked up right where Judge Jones left off in terms of making his court time available to me, and I really appreciate that a lot. In those judgments, the eleven judgments we took, there were, involved fourteen parcels of property and twelve thousand five hundred dollars. We were able to release, again, like a dismissal, we were able to release five core judgments for a little less than two thousand dollars. We prosecuted eight tax sales involving fourteen thousand dollars. We also did a tax warrant that sought twenty-one hundred dollars for the city. And a tax warrant's a seizure, we have the right to seize personal property, a manufactured home, or business personal property, those who owe you money for those, for those types of accounts. And we, we don't like to do that, because it can be confrontational. We don't want to be confrontational on your behalf. But we, we had to do it on one case, and we did collect twenty-one hundred dollars. And the only thing that matters to anyone is how much money we collect. So, we were able to collect a little over eighty-four thousand dollars for the city. That is less money than we collected the year before, but that is a good thing. The city of Stevenville has, has a declining delinquent tax roll. That is a great thing. That means you're getting paid your current taxes on time. We're still collecting delinquents that are out there, and the delinquent tax roll balance is declining. That's a great thing. That means your money's front-loaded, you've got more of your money to use. And I'm really, I'm really proud of the fact that both here and at the, at the school, that it, that is true, and I'm really happy for that. Any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Brown? All right. Well, thank you very much. Do we need to accept that report? Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I move we accept the delinquent tax collection report as presented.
It's been moved by Mr. McDannell, seconded by Mr. Nix, to accept the delinquent tax report as presented. Any discussion? Y'all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Y'all's opposed? All right, that motion carries acceptance of that report, and thank you for the, for the good news. Appreciate that. Now, we have a related item on the agenda tonight, which is a resale deed for Lot seven, Block sixty-three, that I'm gonna allow us to introduce this topic, but Jennifer to explain what's going on with the deed, and then Jeff, you can just pipe in as, as you need to.
This property was one that we had attempted to sell on the courthouse steps as a first time sale. It didn't sell then, so we had it in trust with our list of properties, that if they do not sell the first time around, we put the unsold properties in trust to the tax and jurisdictions, which means that any property that's in the city, it is jointly owned then by the county, the city, the school, and the water district. So, we had a person that approached, one person that was approaching us at the county, and a person that was approaching the former city manager about purchasing this property. In the past, you've received requests from people that want to purchase one of our properties in trust, and usually that's when they want to bid less than what the opening bid was at the original tax sale. And those we've sent over to you, you've put on the agenda and discussed whether or not you would want to accept that person's bid for less than what is due, to get it back on the tax roll and, and something being produced on it. In this case, we had two people that were requesting to bid on the property, so we backed up and we said, no, we're gonna have a public sale, we'll go back to the courthouse, we'll be back on the steps, and anybody out there can bid on it, not just these two people, because if you got two people interested in it, we didn't know how many more out there there were. So, this resale, we actually collected everything that we had due in the original sale, and so that is, as that result, this resale deed does have to be signed by the mayor, the school superintendent, the county judge, and the board director of the water district. So, we had sent this over here, and this is the first time you've had one of these in quite a while, because normally we have somebody requesting a, to purchase for less than what's due. And so, it, it caused a little bit of confusion as to, what are we supposed to do with this one? Because it, this has been a scenario we haven't gotten to see in quite a while. What, about ten, fifteen years ago, we did a, we had quite a bit of resale properties, and we did a mass resale. And we were amazed that we actually got more than what was due at that resale. And that is a similar situation when we, when we did that one that way. But we haven't, we haven't done any major resales in quite a while, nor do we usually have anybody that's bidding this exact amount or even a little bit more. But that's why this one was, was placed on there. It is on Charlton Street, behind the post office. It's a vacant piece right now. Just a lot, just a lot, right, right next to the dinner bell. Well, what was the dinner bell? I don't know what it's called now. Whatever that building is, it used to be the dinner bell.
Okay.
Mayor, would it be appropriate for me to raise one other topic that we discussed earlier today?
Yeah, I think it would, and, and what I, I think it'd be important for the council to hear is that the, the reason that we got interested in this is the, the city obviously had some liens against this property that we were looking to collect, and, and I guess as Jeff is gonna explain to us, we, we can't necessarily collect those liens in the normal process, but there are some options that he's offered to, to pursue for us, and I think it offers a, a new way of maybe trying to recoup money that in the past we may not have been able to. So, Jeff, if you want to give us the details on that.
I'll try to be brief in this discussion. As Mr. Thomas knows, sometimes lawyers can get long-winded, if I am, y'all just give me a sign. With regard to the liens, the city liens that are on these properties, there's both a section of the tax code and a long line of Texas Supreme Court cases, which say that a party to a delinquent tax suit cannot enforce inferior liens through the sale of the property. It's fairly clear and fairly simple. And so, despite the fact that, I understand that y'all would like to collect your lien money and often have tried to help in that regard, in this particular situation, it would not have been possible based upon the law and, and based upon those previous Supreme Court decisions. But, I have another small city in another county, I say small city, it's about the same size as Stevenville. And for the last nine years, I have, I have attempted to collect their outstanding liens through my delinquent tax lawsuits. That is permissible, and I've done it with, with some degree of success. Probably on the, on the order of eight to ten thousand a year in lien recovery. Doesn't sound like a lot, but, but I think over time, it certainly adds up and can be meaningful. All I've asked, in, in a, I don't think it would hurt to mention, it's the city of Terrell, if y'all want to investigate what we're doing there. But what, what I, all I, all I've asked them to do is to sign a little letter agreement with me, that they would pay us twenty percent of whatever we collect in terms of those liens. Then what I do is when we get ready to file any delinquent tax suit here in the city, we will, we will search a database, which I've talked to staff about creating, we'll search that database, tie it to the tax numbers, to tax account numbers, and then we'll add two paragraphs in our petition, and three paragraphs in our judgments. And that way, we'll have a little bit more ammunition to try to collect those judgments. One of the things, if we go to a sale, we probably won't be able to collect it, but if somebody wants to come in and protect that they're interested in their right to their property, one of the things they have to do to get a release of that judgment is pay your liens. And that's a very effective tool. If I've got a judgment, and they want that judgment released for, because they want to sell it or because they want to get a loan on the property to build something or whatever, we certainly have, we certainly have the right to get those liens collected before that judgment's released. So, I think it's a tool that, that, it's just another tool that we can use to try to help collect those liens and try to get y'all a little bit more revenue.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yes?
Does the groundwater district sign this thing?
They can. They had signed an agreement with the county to sign off for their interest if, if it was below a certain amount or something.
So, if, if there's aren't any other questions, I think one of the things that Pat Bridges mentioned earlier this morning is, is he will be interested in getting with Jeff and just getting that paragraph so we can start pursuing that for, for us.
Yeah, I'll be glad to come back and answer any questions the council will have at whatever appropriate time.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. Jennifer said that I could encourage people to, and remind them that the polls are still open, but not everybody rush over there at once, and so. They're doing a great job. And I guess they're open till seven, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, the next item on the agenda, I'll turn over to, to Pat Forrest to go over this issue on economic development.
Mayor, there's, there's been discussion amongst the council about potentially hiring Jeff Moore to come down and represent the city and provide counsel, to, legal counsel to the city as, as we prepare for potentially having a type A or B economic sale, economic development sales tax election. I believe Mr. Wagner had initially been in contact with him, and I've received a proposal from Mr. Moore to, to represent the city. And I forwarded an electronic copy of that to all, to the mayor and all council members this afternoon for their, for their review. So, I suppose if you all want to discuss whether or not this is the appropriate time to, to take that action.
Okay, so I'll just open the floor for discussion on this.
This is, this does not have to be passed on tonight. I think the main thing that we would need a lawyer for is, if, if, if the council votes to submit this to an election, the council has to have an ordinance approved by February of this year, and, and I'm not sure if, how many lawyers or people around know how to prepare that kind of ordinance for, for the vote. I'm sure that this guy does, and he's done it many times before. And so, I just want to put it on the agenda to get it started. And I have talked to various members of the planning and development about this, but we hadn't officially, you know, voted on, on this, and we don't have to do it tonight. But the one, the one thing I think we will probably need for is just to make sure that ordinance is done properly. And I understand Judy Miller's had some experience with this in other places. And I, I don't think this is gonna be a really expensive matter, because I don't think he's gonna do a lot. We're certainly not asking him to be the city attorney of Stevenville just to work on this one thing. And I, I don't know what all he would have to do, but we could try to limit his, his time as much as we could, and may not. Another thing we might, I, I don't know if he gives political advice on how to handle the election or not. You know, he may be, I didn't talk to him about that. He may be saying, well, I don't handle that. But this, handling the political aspects of this is gonna be, you know, anytime we talk about taxes, it's gonna be interesting and difficult. So, anyway, I just wanted to get it on the agenda. We could, we could bring it back up in December at the next one and do it. That, that would give him enough time to do what he needs to do. And so, we can vote on it tonight or wait a while or whatever y'all want to do.
Any other comments?
Should we go ahead and hire him tonight, or, I mean, accept the proposal that he's put in here?
Well, I don't see any reason not to. I, that's just me talking. I, I think we need an experienced person to, to do that ordinance and start to advise us on, on how to handle it then. And, you know, if anybody wants more time, we have more time to think about it. But I don't need any more time, because I think it's, it's time to go ahead. But I, I guess, I guess, I would make a motion to go ahead and, go ahead and do it, but I wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't bother me if people want more time on the thing, you know?
Well, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
All right. Okay, that's a motion.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's what you call a rolling start.
Let's get on with it.
I think, not exactly a kickoff.
So, Alan, I tried to recognize you before the motion started flying, but...
Well, I've got several questions. Are, are we hiring him to...
So, let me just recognize that there was a motion and there was a second to retain as presented in our agenda. So, it just, and then open the floor for discussion. So, Alan, go ahead, please.
And I, maybe I'm not clear on this, but are we hiring him just to set up the proper sequence of events to call for the election and then drafting the verbiage for that and nothing more? Or are we hiring him to promote the passage of the election? Or, I, I'm not sure from looking at this what we're hiring him to do.
Well, that, yeah, and that's, that's the reason I'm, I'm not so aggressive about getting it approved now. Of course, we, we have, the city council has not yet voted to even have an election yet.
Correct.
You know?
And I think it's a little premature to hire somebody to, to call an election that we hadn't decided if we're gonna have yet. And I think our city secretary is capable of drafting the ordinance and calling the election she does for the other elections.
The city secretary draw a legal ordinance for an election? Well, possibly so. This is a pretty specialized thing, you know? I, I just want to make sure that i- if we do it, that we have time to get the ordinance done, done the right way, you know? And at some time, well, obviously, the city, the council has to vote on whether we're gonna have one or not. And, you know, we, we might wait, we might put that on the agenda for December and vote on that, you know?
Mayor? I'm a hundred percent supportive of after seeing Mr. Moore's presentation a few months ago, or feels like a few months ago, I guess it was probably a few weeks ago. Gotta wake up here. I'm a hundred percent supportive of this, and I, and I guess my question is, I'd almost prefer to table this, because I agree with, with Mr. Nix, that we don't really have a plan of action right now. And I'm all for, for hiring him, if that's what we need to do. But maybe talking about this at a committee meeting, and would be a, would be a better course of action before we, before we hire him. And if we need to hire him, then I'll support that a hundred percent. I, I would question if we do vote, and I will certainly support to put this election on the ballot, I would, I would not probably support using taxpayer money for the promotion or, or passage of it. To me, that needs to be a private citizen role, if you know what I mean, to, to, private citizens on their private time want to go out and support this camp. And, and I don't know if it's the city's role to hire a consultant to help win an election. And I'm, I'm inexperienced in that, I'll tell you that much, but that would be my initial thought, so.
And that's one of the reasons I'm a little uncomfortable with this, because it's a little open-ended to me. And I agree with you, if the council decides to do it, we may need help promoting it. But I'm also, like you, I'm, I'm reluctant to use taxpayer dollars to do that. And, and that appears to me to be what we would be doing by hiring him.
When the school district has a bond election, are they allowed to use, I mean, does this, is the school, and I, this is my ignorant speaking, but...
Unfortunately, so I think the way it works is...
Well, yeah, we, we could circumscribe his, uh...
Community organization.
Yeah, that's what I would think, yeah.
We, we could just say, that's not part of your job, and we're not gonna, not gonna pay you for that, not gonna ask you for that, just for legal stuff, you know, if, if we decide to do that. But I, I just don't want us to get caught and not have the thing done in time. I, I think if we, you know, just an idea, if we wait until December fourth and had the, maybe have the election, have the vote here on whether we're gonna put it up for election. In the meantime, planning and development study thing a little bit more, and be more prepared for it. And if, if we, if we vote to have an election in December, then we still have time probably to get him hired, and maybe limit him to legal stuff instead of political stuff.
I'd certainly be more comfortable with that.
And I think there's, personally, this is me personally speaking, I think there's a support on the council to do this, but let's do it the right way, and let's give the staff a few weeks to come to our planning and development committee meeting with a plan of action of how we need, what's the right way to do this, how other cities have done it. And so, with that, I, I move to that we table the motion.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Hogan and seconded by Mr. McDannell to table the item. Any discussion on that?
That's, that's fine, that's fine with me. I think it's a good idea, probably.
I just do want to note that we need to, I, I think that we need to put this on the agenda, and we do need to meet on this, Mayor, in, in sometime in the month of November in planning and development.
So, Jerry, do you want to speak to that?
I will call a meeting out of planning and development board, or committee.
Right.
And get it worked out.
It's my, it's my understanding that we, we are working toward having a meeting on the twenty-fifth of November.
Correct.
Right? For Planning and Development Committee that would allow this discussion to take place. And we invited, or planning to invite, I guess, instead of going to chamber to participate in that. Let, let me just say hi, well, let me stop and see if there's anything else that, that needs to be said by any member, because I, I want to clarify that I heard three things that we're actually talking about here as it relates to things we need to understand and that might need legal assistance. One is, what is the structure and bylaws that are required to form a corporation that is an economic development corporation? That in itself is a, is a legal task, okay? The second thing is, the, the task of putting together a, an election package that you were speaking to, Alan, that, I mean, yeah, Cindy does that all the time. And so, is there really a legal piece to that, or is there a subtlety about this type of, of action that would require something different than just a, a normal election? And then the third is the, is the legal aspects of advocacy or, or opposition to the idea, and how is that properly executed? And I think those are three areas. The first one I mentioned, I think, is what, one of the key aspects of the meeting on the twenty-fifth needs to be. So, we know what, what is the structure that we're talking about, what are examples of bylaws that are out there about how, how these EDCs are organized? I know, I'm, I'm very curious to learn that, because I know that from what we've heard so far, that, you know, there were type As, and they existed for a while until somebody had a better idea, and there's type Bs, and they've existed for a little while. And I, I really feel like we're on the, on the verge of a new idea. And, you know, what, what is that that best suits our scenario? And, and I think us getting it together and getting some examples of bylaws and, you know, Boyd or Jerry, I don't know if y'all are willing or interested in trying to do some research to, to get us some samples to look at, but I think that would be helpful for us.
That's what you'd be hiring Moore to do, really, you know? That's, that's the legal paperwork. And, and he'd be the, you know, probably the best one to get, to get that stuff together. And we can probably find some, you know, some other cities have used.
Well, I, I think, you know, maybe if you take the, take the map of, with the, the dots that you had on it, and we just ask the staff maybe to call the EDCs there and say, hey, can you send us your bylaws?
Yeah.
And our, our list.
We could probably get, we could be at the bylaws, not just roll out, because he did them up there.
Right.
Do you know, though, Mayor, would you need to, wouldn't you have to have the election first and have the referendum language before you create a set of bylaws? And that's, that would be my question, is what would come first?
To me, the...
Seems to me you wouldn't have a, you wouldn't create the corporation into bylaws before the election, but I could be wrong.
I, I don't think you would technically execute the, the corporation, but I don't think, I know, I'm, I'm not gonna support us moving forward with any vote on anything if we don't know how we're organized to perform. And so, what, what I think we need to do is understand, you know, are we running a, is this gonna be a runoff fence or a pass offense? And let's, let's decide, you know, what, what that looks like.
Pass.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you know, that's more exciting. Mayor, if I may, I mean, I think, it actually been a little more vocal earlier, I think this is kind of the issue the council's struggling with, is what, how do we get this ball rolling exactly? And to me, I think, looking at hiring Mr. Moore is probably the first way to get the ball rolling, because we're asking pretty material to be presented to council now, has to consider bylaws and consider ordinances. But I mean, Mr. Moore is the one in charge of that. And so, I think if the council wants to take an action to actually pursue this, I think it starts with Mr. Moore, in my opinion. It doesn't obligate us to forming a four B or four A tax structure, but that's gonna be the guy that gives the information to the council, because I mean, I think our staff is probably, and they're adequate and enabling competent enough to get the information. But I mean, Mr. Moore's our guy that's gonna get it together. So, if we're really serious about this thing today, the vote to take is to hire Mr. Moore to get the ball going, to see if it's something we want to do or not. And we're only gonna be out a couple hours probably, so two hundred fifty, five hundred, six hundred fifty dollars. So, I think Mr. Moore's the place to start, in my opinion, so.
Well, let me add to that. I asked him one time, how much time, I asked him how much money it would take to get the papers together, the corporate papers, and he said maybe four hours. Well, that's four hours times two twenty-five, that's nine hundred dollars, I guess. And we could, you know...
I think we need him at this meeting that's coming up. I think it would be good to have him there. So, that means I need to rescind my motion, because we just need to pay him two hundred and fifty dollars, and I'll be happy to do that. But, I mean, none of us are experts on this. And he obviously has a wealth of experience, so having him at that meeting on the twenty-fifth would be a, I don't know if technically I need to rescind my motion, so we can then do that, if that's the case. Then, I was thinking that we were getting Mr. Nix into a huge, you know, I mean, if we need to pay him an hour or two to come down here for the meeting on the twenty-fifth, I'm fine with that.
Well, that'd be more than hours.
And, and then also, if I may, I mean, of course, this engagement letter is not, we don't have to use the services, we don't want to. I mean, people keep open engagement letters all the time. So, I mean, it's available if the staff wants to call and say, hey, would you mind sending us a go-by to use to present to the council before we get to signature it up? Maybe he'd be interested in doing that, I don't know. But at least, in my opinion, this gets the ball rolling, because I think he's our starting point, not using the staff or us, using Mr. Wagner or Mr. Warren to get stuff together. I mean, it's Mr. Moore's the one that's expert in this.
Probably the fastest way to get the corporate papers is just ask him to send, send us a copy of the last one he did, you know? As far as him being here on the twenty-fifth, I, I think he's, he's scheduled for every two, three, and various city council places. I think we can get more information faster at two, two twenty-five, an hour from him than we can from...
Well, if nothing else, he could do research for us in preparation to the, for the meeting to support Jerry's committee work that night. So, any other discussion about that? Okay, so we're gonna vote on the table, I guess, and then we'll vote on the original motion. Huh? You, you would...
Yeah, if, if, if the council's wish to have him come to a meeting or do an hour or two or to work for us, I'm fine with rescinding my motion.
Okay.
So, I'll do that.
All right. So, that motion is... So that motion is...
Who's, who's second to the motion?
With, with, with Mr. McDonald.
I believe I seconded it.
Okay, so, Randy, we good?
Yes.
Okay.
No, what's wrong?
All right, so we'll go back to the, the primary motion, which is to, uh, accept an engagement letter. And I want to qualify that with what Brady just said. This does not obligate us to spend a dime. Uh, it, it gives us the ability to request consultation on an hourly basis. And so if, Jerry, if you need something with Pat to support the committee meeting on the twenty-fifth, this gives you the ability to reach to an expert to help with that. Does that clarify your concern, Alan?
Uh, yeah, but of course, as soon as you pick up the phone and call him, the clock starts.
Right.
Uh, and, and you're authorizing that, which I still have an issue with. Uh, we had decided, it's not that I oppose, uh, the EDC or the formation of it or pursuing the information about it. I, I'm kinda like you, what's it gonna look like? How do we know what we're agreeing to? Where are we gonna go with it? And, and then we're gonna put it to the voters and say, voters, are you willing to increase your property taxes by X amount to offset the sales tax revenue that we're gonna put into the EDC? There's a tremendous amount of work, preparation and salesmanship gonna be required here, I think.
That's right. You, you say you won't see what it looks like, well, you find out by asking him.
Right. So I, and I, and I think that, Alan, is, is something that, that we, uh, we've gotta do, uh, to understand what our options are. Because let, let me reiterate the point, I, I'm not convinced that what is out there today is what Stevensville needs. Because I'm, I'm, it's just a gut feel of mine that the, the process has matured to the point that, that, um, fine tuning what a boilerplate, um, bylaw and corporation looks like may not be the right answer for us. And so us getting together and getting the expert here to talk to us, how, how does this best fit in Stevensville? And what we have here, uh, would be beneficial to us. But he, he has, um, I guess... So I'm agreeing with what you're saying, that this is a, this is a, a way to, um, address those concerns. Because we, we don't have the, the knowledge here locally to do that, so.
He did tell us at that meeting though, like state law, I mean, it, it tells you who has to, you know, how many people are on for an A and a B.
Right.
So there's gonna be some things, I think, that are just sitting, that we're not gonna have the flexibility to change. But we kinda need him to give us a how-to guide to kinda get the ball rolling, so.
Okay, any other discussion? Right then, we'll proceed to vote, uh, all, all those in favor of, um, the, the motion to, uh, retain, uh, Jeff Moore for services related to Economic Development Corporation Development. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, um...
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So the, uh, Randy, is the, the contract that he submitted gonna give that kind of flexibility? Or, or is it, give us any commitment other than what we talked about here?
It gives you flexibility.
Okay.
Good question. So that, um, motion carries. All right, and, um, just to reiterate, uh, what's already been said, we are planning, uh, planning and development committee meeting on the twenty-fifth of November to, uh, talk about that. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is the planning and zoning, uh, section. And, um, Pat, well, I'm gonna turn this over to Judy, or are you, why don't you introduce it?
Yeah, uh, Judy Miller will, uh, explain, uh, the, the request coming before council tonight. But before she does, uh, Mr. Andy Hanson, the, uh, developer of Elk Ridge, uh, would like to address the council first. So, Andy, you wanna come up to the podium?
Thank you, Pat, mayor, city council. Unfortunately, I wasn't at the planning and zoning commission meeting last Friday. I was, I was out, or last Monday, I was out sick, so some of this could have been addressed then. But it was suggested that I kind of present the whole master plan or the thinking, um, long-term with Elk Ridge and the trailhead and everything that's been talked about and contemplated out there to kinda give an idea of how these pocket parks work. Um, my initial proposal for phase three did not include a pocket park. And the city requested that I add that, uh, right before the preliminary, um, plat was submitted to, to P and Z a number of months ago. So, we have here that point.
This is nine fourteen, Elk Ridge, of course, phase one, phase two, this is the proposed phase three, which includes the, uh, the pocket park here. We also are in the process of, assuming this is approved, we're gonna immediately develop or submit a plat to develop this. We've got a church that wants this two acres right there that, um, will require to go through planning and zoning at city council in order to, uh, create a, a lot for that. I've also penciled out a street to come in here and a time to help run. And I've had conversations with Tech Stop. Before I go to P and Z, I've gotta get some sense from Tech Stop of where we can put that street coming in here. And range, and I realize that we're, we're several years down the road, it, it could be three to five years. This is the Boski River, and you see that little cutout all the way at the top? And that line that connects right there is the trunk line for the city sewer main. It's been talked about that we can put a trailhead there for the Boski River, uh, walking jogging trail. This would have restrooms, uh, parking facilities, other, other buildings the city might see fit. And in the development of the balance of Elk Ridge, you could connect the jogging trail with various, um, located parking po- parks and jogging trails, bike trails, all kinds of things that, uh, you see other cities, um, honestly require it now. But it's no longer even an option for these pocket parks, they're, they're starting to, um, put these on an hourly basis. So that's kind of master plan. They, the area right here is outside the city limits, um, that will be brought into the city limits on a voluntary, um, annexation basis when the, when the time comes. The distance between the current pocket park and the possible trailhead up at the river is about seventeen hundred feet. So it'll take obviously several years to go up there all the way. This pocket park, again, I wasn't at the planning and zoning commission meeting last Monday, but a, a couple of questions came up that I'd like to, to address and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. Um, first is accessibility. Accessibility, I'm gonna break down in two parts. Uh, one is public accessibility and the other is maintenance accessibility. Can we pull up the plat? Of phase three? Okay. This is the pocket park. Main accessibility will be from this phase four on the opposite side. That's where we have our curb to gutter, uh, we'll need an additional eighty feet there to be in compliance with things. It didn't make sense to kill a number of these lots here, to open up the pocket park just because of the way the land was laid. Now, the time it'll take to develop this, we should be far along with phase, phase four. And hopefully we'll tie it together at the same time. Probably not gonna happen, there's probably gonna be some gap there. So I met with, um, Nick Williams from the, uh, street department, city public utilities. And we talked about putting, going ahead and putting in a driveway right here, not selling this lot, but giving accessibility across there until such time as this is developed and a road is in there for accessibility for the general public, um, and for maintenance.
The next question that came up was costs. You may already be familiar with this, the, the P and Z wasn't fully, uh, a couple of years ago, there was a builder tax passed where we pay fees into a park fund. This is a liability to the city. It's a liability to the city because you can't use the money for anything besides it's designated purpose. So I'm told there's a hundred eleven thousand, three hundred dollars in that account. With receivables, that's probably closer to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. That money can only be used for its intended purposes, and the city ordinance explains that. But the general spirit of it is for new park development and additional add-ons of existing parks. So, if I donate the land to the city, and this is just under an acre of land, the fees associated with that, if I opted to do the fees or you requested I do the fees, are thirty thousand dollars. So by giving up this acre of land, I'm saving thirty thousand dollars in fees. But I sell lots out there for forty thousand apiece, so I'm giving up a hundred twenty thousand dollars of lots to put this park in. So, the park is needed because of Elk Ridge. We have over a hundred children out there now, if you go around and count. There's over a hundred fifty, uh, people out there, most of them pretty high-paying, um, property taxes because these are all newer homes. So with that many kids, that many citizens, the idea of these pocket parks is just that. It's not intended for somebody to get in their car in Gulf Country, drive to Elk Ridge, find a place to park, get out and swing on a swing set, a park bench, and look at this bronze sign that has the city council's names on it. I mean, it's just gonna be mostly people in Elk Ridge. That's, that's the intent for, for there. But if you go out to Elk Ridge right now around five thirty or six on a nice day, uh, the streets are covered up with kids. I mean, there's just a lot of kids out there. This is what they call in the developer world, a move-up subdivision. Move-up subdivisions typically have families with kids. They've got, you know, a bunch of kids and they're ain't, range from, you know, young to old and, um, the, the park is, uh, is needed for that. The ongoing cost of maintenance, so I, I donate the land, the city park fund pays for the improvements. Uh, Drew Wells had indicated that a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar expenditure with just minimal improvements is what he would think appropriate. He said, you're not gonna put a basketball court out there, this is a very small park. You're gonna put a swing set, a park bench, trash can, a bronze plaque, and, and maybe a monkey bar or something. So it's, it, it's, it's just a neighborhood, um, pocket park. Honestly, I didn't even know the, the term pocket park before, uh, before it was brought up to me to put in here. Uh, ongoing maintenance and upkeep of the park, uh, Drew's not here, so I don't wanna speak behi- for him, but he says it's really negligible, uh, to keep the grass cut and trash picked up on something this small. Um, certainly the, uh, tax revenues generated by all the new development out there, um, would be beneficial. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm, I'm down to five lots, buildable lots at Elk Ridge. Two of those I really don't wanna build on, so I'm, I'm essentially down to three buildable lots. So I need a new phase approved so that I can continue to build. And I think it's a good thing for Stevensville, I've, I've never had anything but positive feedback on Elk Ridge. The only negative I've ever heard is from my original families that just say the streets are too crowded and our kids don't have a place to play. And if I'd known there's any question, I could easily have several dozen families in here with kids to give their opinions. Can I answer any questions?
Any question for Mr. Hanson? Mr. Speaker?
So I'm assuming what you do is you just give us an easement across that lot until some later time when you build a street to the access from the backside.
This is my request. If it's an official easement, it's gotta be on the plat, and there's gotta be a mo- there's gotta be a decision to rescind it. Uh, if you're comfortable with it, I'm gonna put a curb in there and we're just not gonna sell that lot because we're talking about a very short time period. If you're not comfortable with it, we'll have to do some kind of, some kind of legal easement with a, uh, mechanism to rescind it when the time comes.
Well, I'd like to get some feedback from, uh, from our council member who's an expert in, in title work and stuff. Jerry, what do you, what do you think? How would you do that?
I don't know the best way to do it. If we prove it like it is, it's approved, he can do whatever he wants to with it.
Well, if we don't do an easement?
Right. Uh, I would guess that Mr. Hanson could, uh, put an easement on that and make it revocable when he had access from the other side, when he develops his other phase.
Randy, what do you think?
Would that be...
Yes, sir, that could be approved with, uh, an easement added.
Randy?
Well, what you're considering tonight is what's before you.
Okay.
We're not gonna, we can't add anything to it, take anything away from it. Uh, I don't doubt that Mr. Hanson will do what he says, but there's not any way for us to legally bind him tonight. You're considering what is before you.
Randy, is there...
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Randy.
Oh. Mr. Hanson, on this pocket park, I mean, do you think this can be a key feature of the subdivision that's gonna help you sell lots? And you're selling, I mean, how many lots are we anticipating in phase three?
Phase three consists of forty-one lots. Um, we're giving up three lots to put the park in. I, I, I think there's a need for it, it's the reason I, I was open to the suggestion. Um, I think we can sell lots without it there. We haven't had any trouble selling lots in the past or selling houses. It's just what does our new communities want to look like? You know, do you wanna have jogging trails and bike trails and green zones and trailheads and, um...
How, how quickly do you think, or you hope to sell these forty or thirty or so lots? I mean, I know you want to sell them tomorrow, but realistically, how quickly though, can you get them sold, you think? Based upon phase one, phase two?
Well, uh, based on the twel- last twelve months, we've had twenty-seven house starts in the last twelve months. So forty-one lots, not, not all those were in the city, but a good portion of them were. Two, two and a half years.
And phase one, phase two, uh, have how many lots?
There's seventy-six lots.
Seventy-six?
Seventy-six lots of phase one and two.
We're talking about, you know, a hundred and ten or so residents out there in the next, or lots out there in the next five years or so, maybe, hopefully, or sooner?
Correct. There, there's enough land there to have several hundred houses, possibly in the three hundred range.
Is there another subdivision that would be comparable to that size currently in city Stevensville once you develop phase three?
Oh gosh, you've got, Tang Woods bigger, has more lots than that, River North, one, two, and three, uh, Gulf Country.
And I guess my point is just this, I mean, I'm just thinking that there's obviously nothing lacking. And there's not a park accessible to this part of town, well, it's a city park, but nonetheless, there's still wanting to be in close proximity to a, a, a large number of people in a small, uh, geographical radius. So I think the need's there, and I assume obviously this is what you wanna do versus donating the thirty thousand dollars to the park fund. Um, so, I, I, I'm in support of how the, uh, uh, phase three's been presented here today. I don't have any questions, so thank you for all you do for Stevensville and developments.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I'm just curious, when you said the city required the pocket park, is that a city council did that, or...
Yeah, it, it, just to clarify, they didn't require it, they suggested it. Uh, Drew actually brought it up, I floated the idea around the people to be at the time. I might, might let Judy address this.
Mayor, would you open that, uh, June, I don't know, please, if we're gonna talk about plat, let's open the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, let's go ahead, uh, if we're, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. So let me, let me, um, Mr. Hanson, you can stay up there because there may be some questions, but let me go ahead and, um, open the discussion for the plat. So Judy, you wanna go ahead and present that for us?
I just felt like in, you know, for the sake of the agenda, let's open up that particular final plat agenda and if we're gonna talk about the final plat.
Yeah.
Um, the P and Z did, um, meet on this Monday, October the twenty-seventh, to consider the final plat uh, that you have in your agenda packet there. Uh, they are forwarding, as you can see from the agenda memo, uh, the vote of the ca- the vote of the P and Z was four to four. And it had mainly to do with the dedication of the pocket park because it was not on the preliminary plat. Preliminary plat was approved by the P and Z on June the eighteenth and was proved without the pocket park. Substantially existing exactly like you have in your agenda book, but without that pocket park, which is point nine one eight acres. The, it went on to the council on July the first, and you also approved it in the preliminary form, uh, without the pocket park. Um, so, uh, had some minutes that I had gathered up from that time. And, um, he submitted then the, the final plat. Um, was my first week here, and he submitted it to Ryan Norton that first week. And it was just the, uh, application for the final plat. All the specs and the construction drawings, et cetera, came later, which is fine, and those have been reviewed. Uh, and, and there was just a misunderstanding, certainly on my part, because I was not, uh, aware at all of the previous agreement from city staff to Mr. Hanson. Had no clue about any of that. Uh, and I raised some questions about access and the fact that there were some, some areas of your master plan uh, and the park dedication, uh, some park dedication, part of the code of ordinances that, uh, really the pocket park did not coincide with. Uh, just raised those as points of question and concern and for discussion. So that raised the issue, and then there was some discussion about... So that raised the issue, and then there was some discussion about access, et cetera. Uh, but all in all, the plat that you see tonight, um, before you substantially is like the preliminary plat, uh, with the exception of the pocket park. Andy has submitted, and his engineer has submitted all the construction specs, they're in the, um, almost finished and being reviewed by, um, staff and, uh, Freeze Nichols for comments. So, um, that being said, if you have any questions, uh, I'd be glad to, uh, kinda peruse the open space plan and the ordinance that I have here on the, uh, park dedication. The exact amount that he would have to dedicate or give to the city is six hundred dollars per lot, which amounts to, um, twenty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. That's the amount that he would have to give in lieu of dedicating the park.
So he's not required to have the park by an ordinance, it's just one or the other?
It's one or the other. That's the way the ordinance is set up.
Okay.
There are some other points of that ordinance, if you ever want to read it in the code of ordinances, that speak to what you should, what should, you should be looking at if you accept dedication of parkland.
Because that becomes our park.
It, the minute this is finalized and set of record in the courthouse, it is ours.
Okay.
For maintenance and future development.
How, how long have we been requiring either a pocket park or this builder tax to use?
Oh, just the ordinance itself. When you said pocket park, that's, like Andy said, it's a, it's a new concept here. I've worked in many cities that have pocket parks, but you fit it into your overall master plan and the future development of any development.
Is there a minimal number of houses in development that triggers this, or is it?
No, it just, it says in your ordinance, you should not dedicate any parkland less than a ha- a half acre.
But, oh, I, no, I meant, is there any size of the development that triggers this need for the greens, please?
Okay, was there another question down here, by Alan or Jerry?
Yes.
Alan, go ahead.
Mr. Hanson, phase four, it is gonna be north and west of, of where we're looking at here for three. Am I understanding that correctly, that it will tie back in to the Alexander Road?
Yes, sir, that's our hope.
Okay.
If, if we get an entrance from Texas dot, and the, the city and the, the P and Z finds everything favorable, is to tie that all together.
Will, will it, at some point, have access to that pocket park from that side with a road? Or will it also have to go through a lot like you're proposing on this side?
No, the, the access from the other side will actually have the, the frontage that's recommended in the ordinance, which is an additional, a minimum of eighty feet of, um, of basically curb along that side of the park. More than likely, I'll put a street. Put a street along this line here, I can't get up far enough, where there's a street that comes down to the access, where there are lots on this side, and there will be an access over there. And they'll have a street that goes directly to the park, and at that point, we will just rescind the easement, um, across this other lot.
Which will free up that other lot for development at that time.
I, I know it sounds backwards, obviously, it would be preferable if we had the, the bigger access up front. It's just the way the land lays. I would have to give up too many lots to, to access it from that side.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry, did you have a question?
No, I'm good, it's been answered.
All right, Doug?
I'm assuming this is maybe a Randy question. I'm assuming that when we own that property, if you can't deed a property or title a property to someone that did not have access to it.
Correct.
You can't landlock a lot.
We won't be doing the park anyway. It's dedicated to park, it'd be a park.
It'll be, but it'll be property that we own, so therefore you can't go out into Boyd's big old ranch and sell some property and not give access to it, is that correct?
That's basically correct, but again, I think we're talking about apples and oranges here, we're not gonna be trying to give anybody access to that. We're not gonna sell it.
That's correct, but it's, I guess my question is, you know, I, I appreciate what Andy does for the city of Stevenville with, you know, just get ready, we'll annex that other land out there, you know, we'll, we'll get you at some point. Now, those other houses, you won't get them built very often, until we get you. You know, just, that's just the way old annexation guy does. But, you know, it's, I appreciate what you do for Stevenville, and I was on the council when we talked about the dedication of parklands, and my opinion is, yes, it's trusting Andy to do what he says he's gonna do, but we could put twenty-seven thousand dollars in a fund, it's gonna sit there in a bank, and it's not gonna do anything anyway, at some point, is my, is what I'm saying. So, you know, if, if we own that piece of property and he decides not to do it, I guess I'm saying, I can get to that property if I want to, but I can, he can't sell it to us and us not get access to it, is that correct?
Correct. Well, the city, uh, city will get the street dedicated in the same plat.
It's got the ten-foot now.
Yes, sir, two times two.
It has access now.
So I'm, I'm gonna support the, support.
Where, where is the access now?
It's along lot seven.
There's two accesses.
The ten-foot, and then in the, in the future, there's gonna be a street right there.
On this plat, it's only a lot there.
Yeah, a lot eight, and then there, there hollow, between lot seven and eight, there's probably some access. I don't know, Mayor, I don't know where I need to step in here, but with your permission, I will now.
Uh, well, let me, uh, yeah, go ahead.
As I was looking at, uh, this matter, I heard all of these same things that, uh, Mr. Hanson said, and talking to Miller and, and Pat. Looked at the subdivision ordinance, and, uh, he has not met all the requirements for plat approval. Now, I know nobody's gonna like me to say this, but I'm gonna tell you what the ordinance says. It requires an environmental statement that indicates that the park site is free of environmental contamination or hazards. Maybe you wished I hadn't looked at that, but I did, and that has not been met to my knowledge. I don't know whether that fits in with what you're, the, off your discussion now, what you're discussing now, but I thought it, I did, I was gonna say it sometime or another, I thought this would be a good time.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think this is good discussion, but I think what that means, what does that mean, Randy? Why don't you tell us?
He's gonna have to redo his application and, and, and put a environmental s- s- statement with it. The reason I'm saying that that might fit into what you're doing right now is because you, you're talking about some things, maybe when he's carrying this, he might be able to cure maybe some of your questions and concerns at the same time. That's the reason I thought this was the time for me to bring that.
All right.
And he'd have to refile, not just submit the information he's to submit.
Can I address that, is that okay?
He might not have to, I haven't, I haven't really thought about that, he might just be able to do this environmental statement and, and then us consider.
Right.
Again, with the hand to back to.
So we can table this for two weeks and come back and approve in two weeks, then?
I, I haven't decided that yet, but I certainly, if I, if I can make that fit, we'll, we'll make it there. At first, I thought he'd have to go after P and Z, and I, and I, I really think he'll have to anyway, because that, uh, that plat's gonna change, and the P and Z's got it. I think the plat's gonna change, from what the discussion I'm hearing is, uh, the environmental statement. If that's all that is required, we can do it.
You, you just said that the plat's gonna change. What, Andy or Judy, from your perspective, is a line on here gonna change? No, it's just gonna be the environmental documentation to support the conditions for the pocket park acceptance.
And I don't know if you've ever done this before, but you, you know, the cities that, well, in other cities that I have served, you conditionally approve the final plat with that submission, it doesn't get filed in the courthouse until that submission is taken care of.
I agree with that, uh, Mayor, and, uh, it, it does appear if it's not gonna change the plat at all, then all he needs is an environmental statement, so I'll agree with that.
So did I understand that we could approve it conditionally based on receipt of that document?
That's what Ms. Miller said, and I think she's right.
Okay.
Right. Any other questions? Mr. McGinn?
Mayor, most of my questions were asked to Mr. Hanson and Judy Miller yesterday. I would just like to, uh, ask Judy the final question again that I asked you yesterday by phone. If you were sitting here in my seat and have all this information, would you approve this plat?
Conditionally with the submission of the, of the environmental statement.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate your expertise, your experience, and, and the, and the job that you're doing.
Anything else?
Mr. Hanson, was there more that you wanted to add to that? Well, I, I, I'm certainly, uh, agreeable to doing the environmental study if, if that's the way to get this approved. Um, this is why we have judges of city couns- councils, because you can't write city codes and ordinances that cover everything. And this, this ordinance clearly doesn't cover pocket parks. If you read it, it doesn't even contemplate this is a possibility. So to do a seventy-five hundred dollar environmental one study on a piece of property that's basically farmland, if you've ever done a phase one, you have an expert go out there and look at it and say, "No, I don't see anything," and he writes it up. Then he does a title search to see if there's ever a gas station or, you know, a junkyard or anything there. And if there's any of those issues that come up, they recommend a phase two. So we've dozed the property, we didn't find any trash, we didn't find anything, this is ranchland, basically, it's never been built on, developed, or had anything done to it. But if it was your seventy-five hundred dollars, would you spend it on a phase one for this point nine acres?
I think I'd probably rather not, but if the ordinance requires it, I don't think we have that option, do we, Mr. Thomas?
No, not in my opinion. I, I might, I don't know, I do, that's what it says. I understand your reasons.
I do too.
Any other questions?
Andy, the environmental, uh, statement, study that Randy has alluded to, is that just for the point nine acres?
Yes.
Because it's being donated to us?
To the city.
Okay, and that's gonna cost you seventy-five hundred dollars?
It's been a while since I've had a phase one done, the last phase one I did was seventy-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Okay, again, um, Judy, do you have a comment?
Randy, the, in, in the subdivision regs, uh, there is section six point one three, where this council can grant variances to the subdivision regs?
I don't know whether it can on this matter or not, we just have to discuss this. I, I was fortunate enough to find this, or unfortunate, however you want to do it. So we, we can look at that.
Well...
I think they probably should pass on it conditionally on getting environmental study or, uh, possible getting a variance if, if it, if that's possible.
Yeah, it, it, it just, it just simply, and I've seen this in, in several codes, but it just simply says if there's something in the regs that, in the subdivision regs, that they feel like that, uh, would cause an undue hardship, that's, that's the criteria right there. And those undue hardship will result from requiring strict compliance, then the council can grant a variance.
A- and if that flexibility exists, then I, I would, um, suggest that Mr. Hanson, uh, make that a, a part of his submittal to show either why cost or cause to, to be a, um, a restriction be, be a part of that submittal. Because we don't know tonight whether seventy-five hundred dollars is a good estimate or not. Um, and a- as a part of the, the, the conditional approval would be the submittal of that, and, and Mr. Hanson, you could, uh, very well in your purview, ask for a variance from that based on conditions that you could present at that time.
Thank you.
I mean, that, that, that seems reasonable.
Yes, sir, right, Ms. Miller and I will serve to get on that, check it out, and we'll be happy to deal with it.
Okay, Mr. Spine?
I appreciate the detail of the rules, I can follow any rules. I'm a little anal about that myself at times. But this is an example of the difficulty developers have in Stevenville or any city, when they come and they engineer, produce an engineered plan, say, "Here's what I wanna do," and we go back and say, "Well, now you need to go do this," and you add some more money to it. And I just think that at some point, whether it's, you're not gonna make it, I'm not gonna make a decision tonight on it, or we're not, but at some point, we've got to be able to say to the builders, "Here's the rules, here's everything you have to do, here's what you have to do to do it. Go get it done, bring us a plat." This gentleman has produced how many millions of dollars of property in our town?
Well, by my math, our, our developments in the last five years generates ten percent of your, uh, city tax revenue.
So I'm just saying that I think at some point, I hear what you're saying, uh, Mayor, that we're gonna approve tonight, I just think that that it's, I'm not talking about just about Andy, but in general, I know other developers in town, that that's the concern they have, is, you know, am I gonna come in and put in millions of dollars of investments, hoping I get that return, when I don't know the final? I need to know from the get-go what my costs are gonna be, because you add that cost, how many lots are you putting in here?
Forty-one.
Forty-one lots, and he's spending forty thousand bucks, giving us forty thousand dollars of property to do that. And I just think at some point, our developers have to hear from us, that says, "Here's what it's gonna cost, start to finish," and he knows what, 'cause he's gonna not borrow money to do this. I'm gonna guess, well, you may have your pocket out and know it, but my guess is you're gonna borrow, and your banker's gonna have to know that as well. And so it's seventy-two hundred bucks, whether it's an appropriate charge or not, it may be exactly what we need to, he may need to have spent the seventy-two hundred dollars, I don't know. I'm just saying that someday, we need to have a process that everybody knows start to finish how to do that.
Councilman, I will, I will fall on the proverbial sword here, because I, you're talking my language, that's what I've done all my career. I think it's very, very important for developers to know and have consistency in the laws.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. This I got into the middle of.
Well, I, I appreciate your position.
And, and I, I was just trying to go by the rules as they were written.
Well, that's why we pay you in the contract to do that, I appreciate that. I'm just saying, I'm talking about these people here as well, is we have to come up with a process that tells the developer, "Man, I'm gonna come to Stevenville, Texas, and I'm gonna make some money, I'm gonna make some good money doing this," and that's what we're all about.
Absolutely.
This was a tough process, and, I mean, Elk Ridge should've been a slam dunk, easy, unanimous, blow right through rubber stamp process. I know we had a kind of a change regime in the middle, and that was part of it, but hopefully it won't go that way next time.
I think part of the answer here, and I was waiting to be able to address this, is, is, uh, we need to work together, uh, with your development and the park master plan, so that we all understand how we're supporting each other, because we really are.
Yes.
And I think that's Doug's point, I, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but you just talked about a plan that has a vision for that area tied into something that the city has a plan for, that has a vision that's right seventeen hundred feet from each other. Why tonight do we not have a shared vision, view of that on paper that's at least in crayon? It would make it so much easier for all of us, and I realize that we're kinda, we're, we're venturing into this. This was brought to you, Andy, as a last-minute idea, and you seemed to think it was good enough to include in, in your strategy. Now, let me sidetrack from that a little bit to say that I don't buy your argument that you're giving up three lots, because if you look at the layout of the streets, you're backed into a corner, and so these are, this is acreage that you really can't use in the near future. And, and so it, it makes it easier for you to give that to the city, because you have no real near-term use for it. That said, I, I think that if we together can create a vision for that, that ties it into the linear park plan, then it makes sense for us to, uh, look at how this pedestrian funnel into the, the trail is a, is a win-win for your development and, and for us and, and the community with the, the linear parks and the support for citizens in that part of town.
Sure.
That, that, you know, the Heritage Hills folks and Elk Ridge folks all will begin to gain ready access to a portion of the trail that they probably haven't even, uh, thought of.
Right.
Before tonight. That's, that's exciting.
It is, there, there's a committee that does this, if you look at the city website, phase six of the trail, uh, has it on there.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, um, originally they had the, the trailhead right there, my understanding is they can't put it there if the city doesn't own it, even on a projected basis. They moved it to the wastewater treatment plant, which, I don't know that you want your trail water head at the wastewater treatment plant, but since you own the property, you can show it there. And once we dedicate, probably you're gonna need two or three acres up there, uh, for that kind of trailhead, um, then the, they can all be tied together.
So the, the point I'd like to make that ties back into what Doug said, is that we, it's easier to execute the, the nuances of a or- of an ordinance if you have the bigger picture in mind as you're attempting to do it, because then you have something to guide your judgment. And that's what we need in this area, it's what we need in, in, in many areas that can, can link these together. And so, you know, I would encourage us to, to use this, this, um, discussion tonight to, um... And so, you know, I would encourage us to use this discussion tonight to put that on the to-do list of an aspect of how this residential area ties into the trail from the linear park plan that we have. Because then it all starts to make sense.
That's great.
And the last thing I wanted to say, just because I wanted to say it, is that the ten feet of access, I've heard some people say, well, that's not really access. And I would say that it's a move in the right direction to provide a pedestrian-friendly access to an area you don't want a place where you can drive to. You need to separate and segregate pedestrian traffic from vehicular traffic. And so that ten-foot easement is really ideal in this scenario. So I think that's a good move.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Mr. McDaniel?
If this council is serious about being pro-growth and business-friendly and working with our developers and builders, then we shouldn't have a problem in voting for the motion I'm about to make. I move we approve the final plat of Elk Ridge Estates, Edition Three, conditioned with the necessary environmental statement of the pocket park as required by our bylaws or ordinances.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Warren, okay. To... Oh, wait in there. Okay. To approve the final plat with the conditional approval of the environmental assessment as defined in the ordinance. Maybe I should say Subject Two. And then, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Andy.
Mr. Hanson, while you're here, I'm going to take the opportunity to ask you a professional question for the council to hear. And I'm going to put you on the spot because you don't know I'm going to ask you this. What is it going to take? You mentioned that this was, what term did you use for these type homes? An industry term tied to this type of home?
Move-up, yes.
All right, so there's another term in the industry that's called starter homes.
Yes.
All right. What is it going to take for developers to provide an inventory of starter homes in our community? Because I hear from many business owners that they have employees that are driving from all over the place, out of town, to come and work in Stevensville. What's keeping you or other home builders from building starter homes in Stevensville?
I can't answer further developers, and I'll start with developers. Because if there's economical lots there and there's a market for the homes, the builders are going to come, I think. Not too long ago, I proposed twenty residential lots out there on Tab and Dale Street. And I got a lot of resistance on it. Because of that, I've not moved forward with it. I live here. My sons both work with me. I go to church here. I've got two little ones in school. I don't want to do anything that's not receptive by the community, and that one just didn't seem to be receptive to the community. Here's my issue as a developer. I'll burn forty, fifty thousand dollars getting something to this stage. I mean, literally, the amount of engineering, plating, surveying, preparation time, meetings, everything that goes into it. If it's not successful, why roll the dice? Doug hit it on the head. You know, developers, investors, you know, they don't want two-day tours of the city. They want two-hour tour of the city, and know they can work with the city. That's what we want. We want to know that if we sit down with somebody that says, okay, this is what we need to do, and we do it, and that's the direction that we go, we can develop that. I would love to put together a subdivision like that. We've actually got house plans that we've worked on with some consultants that are very popular for starter homes in other parts of the Southwest. And where do we do it is a problem. Had I known that neighborhood was off limits, I wouldn't have burned the cash to get that development ready. I had to get it approved or submit it to be approved because of my lender. I didn't have a choice on that. But I haven't pursued it because the lender just wanted a plat that they didn't care if I built it out or not. So if there's somebody, city staff, city mayor, you're probably the one to do it. Let's sit down, and let's find a part of town that you would like starter homes in. Let me pursue buying land and getting something rolling there, and we can do it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Brad Smith's subdivision number two-eight-one, he had called it starter homes. I don't know how that turned out.
I would agree with that.
I think he's got quite a few lots over there that are unsold, probably.
He does. He's got duplexes, and there's honestly just not a whole lot of builders left building inside the city limits. I tend not to go with the low-end homes. Amber Homes tends to not go with the high-end homes. So, you know, we've got the majority of the market, the one-eighty to two-hundred-thousand-dollar to five-hundred-thousand-dollar type homes. And they've got, and they're developing on Frye Street. I would categorize that as starter homes as well. There's only about twelve homes there. But, yeah, we need a plat of land where we could build forty or fifty. You need about forty or fifty lots to be economical. It's tough to go in and build twelve lots.
Right.
There's just, your costs per lot are so high.
Okay. Well, we're, you know, we're beginning to talk more about, and, you know, we've got a meeting talking about annexation. We've got a meeting talking about economic development. I mean, the demand is there for the units. What I hear you saying is that there needs to be the land to support that.
Correct. And the support from the city to get it start to finish without a whole lot of changes. Even though I was in favor of the pocket park, I had to go back and re-engineer and retool everything to include that. So there was cost, and there was a month delay to do that. It wasn't huge, and it was worth doing, but if I had known from the beginning what the plan was, it just makes things smoother and easier. Our townhomes, by the way, sold out before we completed them, those twelve townhomes that we built. They filled up almost immediately. The weekend that we got the COs, they filled up.
Yeah.
So we sold half and kept half for, but there's a need.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. All right, and we'll move then to the Personnel Committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it short and sweet. A few weeks ago, we met, and the interim city administrator, there was some conversation about if the interim city administrator should proceed with hiring the Community Services Director. And under our city charter, the person in that position is the one that hires the director-level position. So we discussed that at length and decided that it would be permissible for the interim city administrator to go ahead and begin a search for a Community Services Director that would replace Drew. And I believe he is in that process, and we, within the next few weeks, there's a committee with citizens and myself on that committee that will help him proceed with that process. So that's where we're at, and that's what we meant on. I'll have the shortest committee report of the year. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Casey? All right, we'll move on to the Public Works Committee. Mr. Nix?
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Works Committee met to discuss with each other and with Mr. Williams a report that he brought to our attention concerning the current fees for water and sanitary sewer taps. He has recently started using some new tracking software that will identify the actual costs associated with materials, labor, et cetera, for each of these taps as they are installed. Based on the information that he received from that, our fees were short in that we were not charging enough to cover our actual costs for what the city was putting into materials and the city labor to install these taps for the people that were developing the various properties. Because of the relatively new information that we were receiving, it was the recommendation of the committee that we take those numbers that he had developed based on that tracking software and basically come up with a number that was between those fees and the existing fees. This step would be between the current fees and what the tracking software indicated were our actual out-of-pocket costs for these. And he stressed to us, and I think we need to remember also, that the city is merely trying to recover the actual out-of-pocket costs for what these associated tasks are. We're not trying to make any money on it, but at the same time, we didn't feel like it was reasonable for the utility funds to subsidize these fees for these taps. Based on the information that he gave us, you find on page eleven the fees that the committee recommended. And based on the action of the committee last night, I would recommend that we pass ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash twenty-six. And I would make that motion to pass that ordinance, which will implement these updated fees to allow more time for the tracking software to work and give us more information to be reviewed at a later date.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Pendleton to approve ordinance twenty-fourteen twenty-six, amending the twenty-fourteen fifteen fee schedule for water and sewer taps as presented. Any discussion? Mr. Sveen?
What's the rate, staff rate for when you determine what the cost, what our expenses are? Do we have an hourly, set hourly rate or numbers of staff or?
I think that rate is basically determined by the number of pieces of equipment that we use and the types of equipment that we use, and then the number of personnel that we have to use, which is also dependent on the number of equipment and pieces of equipment. And Nick has established hourly costs based on the equipment cost, the replacement, the fuel used, and et cetera, for all of those things.
I guess my question is, if we didn't put in one tap for the next twelve months, would we cut any staff time?
I think staff probably has many other things that they would be doing if they weren't out installing taps. But the equipment that they use would probably be used in other areas also.
That is my own question.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. McDaniel, Public Health and Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Safety Committee met and discussed three items in our last meeting. The first item was amending chapter seventy-two of the general parking requirements. And it basically just involved making an addition that I will read, seventy-two point oh-two, authority of the Chief of Police. The Chief of Police is hereby authorized to determine and temporarily designate no parking on streets or portions thereof to alleviate problems caused by hazardous conditions or heavy traffic conditions. Streets or portions thereof shall have been designated for no parking, shall have appropriate signs posted. The Chief of Police is hereby authorized to temporarily suspend parking restrictions on city streets or portions thereof as appropriate for special events or circumstances. The signs designating that parking restrictions shall be covered during the time the parking restriction is suspended. And Mayor, I would move approval of this amendment to seventy-two oh-two. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Pendleton to approve ordinance twenty-fourteen twenty-seven, amending chapter seventy-two, general parking requirements as presented. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries.
The second agenda item that we discussed was in chapter seventy-five of the parking schedules. And this is an annual event that the Public Health and Safety Committee goes through. We have recommendations from the Police Department as to any changes that we need to make to improve traffic flow and make it more safe for our public to use. And these items included adding no parking zones on both sides of Alexander Road over here around the courthouse, on the east side of the Hundred Block of Belknap, on King Street due to the college traffic. Both sides, Monday through Friday, eight to four P.M. in the six and eight hundred blocks. West College, the one hundred block. North Harbin Drive, from the intersection of Sloan Street to Frye Street, is a no-parking zone there in front of the stadium at all times. On Jones Street, because the delivery trucks that serve the food service people in the, what's that building called? Is it Barry B. Thompson? Okay, building. They have delivery trucks. There are eighteen-wheelers that come in there. And if there's cars on either side of Jones Street there, as well as North Lilian, they have trouble getting in there. So this addresses that during the daytime hours. West McNeil, over in front of the high school on Overhill. West Harlson Street, over by the stadium. And those will be designated by signs. If there's any questions about it, we can have Jason King come to the podium and answer that. Otherwise, Mayor, I would move approval of amending chapter seventy-five, the parking schedules as shown in our agenda package. Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Warren to approve ordinance twenty-fourteen twenty-eight, amending chapter twenty-five, parking schedules. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries as presented. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, then the Nominations Committee. Ms. Zachary?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met, we discussed vacancies on the board. We have one, we have some upcoming, as some people have indicated a wish not to serve. We also discussed how to increase the number of applications that we had received. And I want to thank Pat Bridges and Cindy, who he posted on all of the Facebook and some of the police websites and stuff. I wrote a letter to the editor, Boyd and Jerry. We're going to speak at the Optimist Club. And I also got the Northland Cable to run some PSAs for that. So we had quite a few applications come in, and I think we still have some trickling in as of, like, tonight. We have a couple more and hopefully some more in the future, and that's what we did.
Good job.
Okay. Well, that's excellent.
Almost as sure to report this case.
Yeah, almost as sure.
I came in second.
Well, and...
Here's a better report.
Let me not only...
Spent really hard about mine.
Sherry, you and your committee, I want to commend for the effort. And for those of you that are here tonight, that I know, I see many faces that have submitted to participate, thank you for your interest and willingness to look at trying to help our community. So it's a great effort, and, you know, everybody's so busy. Not everybody is as engrossed in what's going on in this room tonight as we are. And so it does take some extra effort for us to go out and try to get people involved, and that's great. And I'll echo Sherry what you said, Pat and Cindy, thank you for your efforts as well. I really appreciate that. All right, with that, then we'll move to the Consent Agenda.
I'm going to refer to Consent Agenda as presented. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Sveen, seconded by Mr. Hogan to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Consent Agenda is approved. Mr. Bridges?
Mayor, just a reminder that city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day on November the eleventh. And we'll also be closed for Thanksgiving and the day after Thanksgiving on November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. There is a half-day retreat for council and staff scheduled for November the twentieth. That will be from one to five. And there is a meeting of the Planning and Development Committee, November the twenty-fifth, beginning at five P.M. Would point out that the Staff Council Retreat and the Planning and Development Committee will both meet at Fire Station Two. And that's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, council members, Mr. Hogan?
Looking around.
Okay. Mr. Ryan, Mr. Sveen?
No comment. Mayor, just one briefly. I came home about a week ago, and as I topped the hill coming down to my house, I see a fire truck and an ambulance sitting in front of my house with the lights... with the lights going. And I'm thinking, oh, my, what's going on? It just so happened that they were at my neighbor's house. But I want to commend the fire and the EMT folks because of their professionalism, their courtesy to the people, and the way they handled that situation. They did an outstanding job. It was not an extremely difficult job, but anytime you have someone in distress like that, you dealt with the person that you transported and the immediate family members and everyone else was comfortable and taken care of appropriately and properly. Please pass that along to your department chief because I know that sometimes their service is difficult and we hardly ever recognize it, but I appreciate how well they handled that. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Accree?
I'm good.
Okay. I'll be brief. I wanted to echo a couple of thank yous. The city staff participated with Steco and the Chamber recently in a bus tour for developers in our community. And I just want to thank the staff for their support. I know Judy was involved with that along with Pat and really went above and beyond to showcase our community. I think that it was, it was an important opportunity for us, more so for us as a community, to come together with a common purpose and really have an opportunity to work together in a unique and coordinated fashion. The folks that were here were blown away by the entire day and a half that they were here, day and an evening, I guess. And, you know, we also included Tarleton and the county and ranger in that. And so it went really well. And I also want to just give a personal thanks to Mr. Burton Smith and the VFW for their hosting of the Veterans Parade that was held Saturday. And also thank the city staff for your great work and support of that. And it was really, another partnership with Tarleton there with their Military Appreciation Day. And it's really, it's really unique. You know, if we were a community without Tarleton, we probably couldn't have pulled the parade off. But with Tarleton here, it allowed us to work together, to create a synergy that was really special. And I know for the veterans that participated and those that were there at halftime for that, for the game, it was really good. And Casey, you and the athletic department did a great job with that. So it was a great community effort for us to be able to celebrate that. And we'll have a ceremony with the American Legion on the courthouse later, this, I guess, next week. So with that, I will call the council into the executive session in compliance with Section five-five-one zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney. And thank everybody for coming tonight. We will reconvene after the executive session.
We're having nominations of any after executive session.